We're one minute out. Seth. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Wednesday, September 14th, City Council Meeting for the City of Albany at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you for joining us this evening. We'll do a roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson. Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski. Mayor Johnson II.
Here. So have you heard from Counselor Olson? Okay. So next on the agenda is a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2022. Whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated officially since 1968. And whereas we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month to show our gratitude for the achievements, inspiration, and service our Hispanic and Latino community provide every day. And whereas Hispanic and Latino individuals help drive our small business economy as workers, business owners, entrepreneurs, enrich our academic environment as teachers, professors, and engineers, participate in good governance and betterment of our society, and ensure our health and community as nurses, doctors, caretakers, and childcare workers. Now. Matt? Okay. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Albany. And I also call upon residents and governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Albany to cherish and celebrate our Hispanic and Latino community. Now it's going to be read in Spanish via video.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Miriam Cummins y me da un gran placer poderles leerle esta noche la proclamación que es la proclamación del mes de la herencia hispana del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre. Considerando que cada año Estados Unidos observa el mes nacional de la herencia hispana al celebrar la cultura y el lagado y las innumerables contribuciones de quienes vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, América Central, y América del Sur. Y por cuanto la herencia hispana se ha celebrado oficialmente desde 1968. Y por cuanto celebramos el mes de la herencia hispana para mostrar nuestra gratitud por los logros, la inspiración, y el servicio de nuestra comunidad hispana y latina brinda todos los días. Y considerando que las personas hispanas y latinas ayudan a impulsar la economía de nuestros pequeños negocios como trabajadores, propietarios de empresas, y empresarios, enriquecer nuestro entero académico como maestros, profesores, e ingenieros, participar en un buen gobierno y en mejorar nuestra sociedad. Y asegurar nuestra salud y comunidad como enfermeras, médicos, cuidadores, y trabajadores de cuidado infantil. Ahora, por lo cuanto yo, Alexander D. Johnson II, Alcalde de la Ciudad de Albany, proclamo que el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como mes de la herencia hispana. En Albany, y también hago un llamado a los residentes, agencias gubernamentales, instituciones públicas y privadas, empresas y escuelas en Albany para apreciar y celebrar a nuestra comunidad hispana y latina.
And witness whereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 14th day of September, 2022. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you. Next up, we have a special presentation. I added it because I forgot to tell her that, well, I forgot to tell the city that I was going to do this. And so the reason I do special presentations, because of COVID, we were locked down, and a lot of our nonprofits got very little visibility for the city because everybody was inside. So I've asked several nonprofits to come and share with them, share with us what they do, so people can find out what's available to them in the city. So I'd like to invite Michelle Robinson from Furniture Share to come up and speak with us. It'll be a 10-minute presentation, then we'll have a question after period afterwards.
Hello. My name is Michelle Robinson. I am the director. I am the Director of Furniture Share. I've been there for 15 years. July 2nd was 15 years. So what Furniture Share does, our mission is to provide locally grown foods, fruits and vegetables, and redistribute furniture to our low-income families within Lynn and Benton Counties. In fiscal year 2021, we were able to distribute almost 34,000 items to our community members living in furniture poverty. We served 5,355 individuals. Of those individuals, 2,704 were children, and we were able to give out 2,268 beds to those children. We also were able to divert almost 850 tons from the landfill. Who do we serve? We serve the people in our community. Many of these face manageable challenges. Some are leaving hostile situations. Many are recovering from illness and addiction. Most are struggling to get back on their feet after being homeless. These are the families that we serve in Albany. In Albany, we roughly serve about 2,100 individuals in Albany. But our demographics of these populations are 30% below the poverty level in Lynn, Benton, and due to the wildfires, we are now serving Lincoln, Lane, Polk, and Marion County, those affected by the wildfires. You might think to yourself, what in the world is Furniture Share? What is furniture poverty? Sometimes we take the most basic things for granted. It isn't until we find ourselves without that we realize many families don't have the basic things to make a house a home. We have families that don't have the financial means to buy brand-new furniture. And I was reminded about two years ago how much furniture costs. We have labs, and they like to sit on our couch, and they drool. So every couple of years, we're having to get new couches, but we went and bought used because they were expensive. And we just got tired, so we broke down, and we went and bought a leather loveseat, not a couch, but a loveseat, and two leather recliners to fit our dogs. I was shocked when we paid for it. It came out to $4,400 just for those three pieces of furniture. That's a lot of money. And like I said, I've been with Furniture Share for 15 years. 13 years later, it still shocked me how much furniture costs, and it reminded me of why we have so many families. We have a lot of families that depend on our services. Their children need beds. They need, I mean, I know when I get home, my grandkids live with me. They're 13 and 14. If they're sitting in my seat, and I walk in the living room, I just do this, and they know they need to get up, right along with my dogs. If they're sitting in my seat, they do that, and they get up. We all have our favorite seat in our house, and these families, they're all working poor. They deserve to have, you know, their favorite seat. So what does furniture poverty look like? The first pictures are before picture. They had a bed, but they didn't have, you know, really the pillows and the sheets. They didn't have a little nightstand for the lamp, because if y'all are familiar with apartments, they usually don't have light fixtures. You have to have a lamp, and they're expensive. And we were able to give this child books and a desk. Here's another room. We were able to give, you know, the dresser, the bookshelf, and a bed for this family. But the one I really like is this picture. Would you want to bring friends, coworkers, to your house if this is all you had in your living room in this before picture? Would your kids want to bring their friends over? My house, when my kids were growing up, we had kids over all the time because I wanted to make sure my kids were safe. What were they doing? I know if our living room looked like this, they wouldn't want to bring their friends. The second picture, we were able to give them a couch, a chair, a loveseat, a coffee table, drapery, pictures. We were able to make this living room functional where these people are proud. They work, they work hard. They just are living in furniture poverty, and their children deserve a home, and we were able to make this house a home for them. So we have several programs. We have our Beds for Kids program, which is basically what it says. We give beds to kids. It's a bed, pillow, sheet, and a blanket. And this year, we gave out over, almost 2,300 beds to kids within Lynn and Benton Counties. The importance of sleep to help break the cycle of poverty. Without enough sleep, school-aged children are experienced poverty, are put at serious disadvantage. They are unable to learn at their full potential. A good night's sleep is one step closer to completing their education and breaking this cycle of poverty. And studies have shown that the best way to break the cycle of poverty is through education and completion of high school. We need to give school-aged children all the tools as possible to be successful in their education, and this tool is a bed. Some facts about the importance of sleep. Sleep deprivation can lead to obesity, diabetes. Sleep deprivation can experience ADHD-like symptoms. Four in every 10 children in Oregon are living in poverty, and every nine seconds, a child drops out of high school. And each child under the age of 12 needs 10 hours of sleep each night. Our other program is Furniture for Individuals in Crisis, and this is just the other basic necessities that, you know, families and individuals need to make a house a home. It's, you know, the dinner tables. It's the refrigerators, the stove, the microwaves. I use my microwave all the time. You know, you need a microwave. We have the kitchen items. We have the bath towels. We've had families that have told us they've had to dry off with wet towels after their kids have taken a shower because they only had two towels. So we also provide towels so these families can have a nice, clean towel to take a shower with. Our other program is Feeding Our Future, which is providing dinner tables to families, and we also include our food boxes. We have fresh fruits and vegetables that we provide to these families. We try to enhance the typical food box. So we work with farmers markets, farmers, and the co-op, and we get fresh fruits and vegetables twice a week to give to our families. And when we're lucky, we also have meat, which I talked to someone today, and we are going to be getting two pigs donated. It's going to be all cut and wrapped, so now our family's going to be able to get meat. So we are able to do that when people donate to that to us. Another program that we have, it's our Veteran Welcome Home Kits. Last year, we were able to serve 519 veterans. This program moves the veteran right up to the front of the list when this program is fully funded. It usually takes about three to four weeks for us to serve a family, and the reason why it takes that long is we can make, we serve 25 families a week. We can deliver, we make 10 pickups and 10 deliveries a day. That's roughly five clients, and then five families that we pick up. They're gently used furniture, so we can redistribute out those items to the families. So there is that, you know, four-week waitlist. But when this is funded, we push the veteran up to the first spot. So if we have availability that day or the next day, that veteran will be served immediately. They served our country, and they finally, after homelessness, they were given a home. We like to, we want to serve them as quickly as possible. This is one of my favorite programs, besides the Beds for Kids. As of October 3rd, 2020, with the wildfires, we were able to serve over 2,300 individuals from all three wildfires, the Echo, the Holiday Farm Fire, and the San Yam Canyon Fire. Within three weeks, we had a warehouse donated, and October 3rd, we had a large furniture drive. We had one family coming that day, and I was nervous that we weren't going to have enough furniture for that family. But we opened up at 9:00, and from 9:00 to 3:00, we had a caravan of trucks and U-Haul coming, and we had four bay doors open, four trucks backed up at the whole time. By 10:30, I had to tell my volunteers, push everything back, stack it three high. We had eight event tents that we had to put stuff under outside after the event was over. Needless to say, we had plenty of furniture for that family when they came. We had people from White Salmon, Washington, come, Forest Grove, we had Bend, we just had everyone. We had such a great community support in this. With that, we were able to serve this many families. We filled a 7,500-square-foot warehouse in six hours. So how are we funded? We're funded by grants, fundraising, individual donors, and business sponsors. To provide a desk to a child roughly cost $40. This is before the gas prices went up, but roughly $200 a week for us to put in our truck, which is a little bit more, as you all know. For us to furnish an entire house of furniture to a family, it cost us roughly $400. And that cost is, we take the phone call from you, we schedule the appointment for us to come pick up whatever you have to donate, and then we pick it up, we take it, we store it in our warehouse, and then we talk to the caseworker. From there, we talk to the client, then we schedule the delivery. So all of those pieces together with staff time, rent, we have utilities, we also have business insurance, we have, you know, we're a business. We have everything like a business. It roughly cost us $400, which is very lean. We are, we value our donor dollar, and we use every dollar wisely. So our fundraising events, if you ever want to know how you can help, we have, on September 28th, we have our very first Ask luncheon. This is going to be at Hope Church. You are all invited if you would like to come. My email is on the slide. You can RSVP or talk to Alex. He has my information. We would love to have you there to, you know, just give you some more information on what we do and how we help our families in Albany. Then we have our second annual Veteran Welcome Home event. It's called the Battle of the Realtors Versus the Lenders. That's just in the month of November for Veterans Day. It's a little friendly rivalry between the lenders and the veteran, I mean, and the lenders and the real estate agents. Every time they close on a loan or a house, they donate $400. Last month, last year, we were able to raise $19,400. We were able to fast-track 49 veterans that did not have to wait on that, you know, four-week waitlist. So that was a really nice event. So if you know any realtors or any lenders, let them know about this little fun event that we have going on. Then we have our Run Your Two-Two Off in February. We have our Albany Taps and Caps in March, which we have the Albany Downtown Association. They help us. They're a very big part of that. We thank Lisa for that. And then we have our 14th Annual Texas-Style BBQ in Hoedown in July. If you haven't noticed, I am from Texas, and I make a killer pulled pork. Volunteer opportunities. We have tons of volunteer opportunities for everyone. We have an ongoing need for people to help in the warehouse. That's flexible time. We have boxes that need to be unloaded for the, you know, the kitchen, the bathroom items, people helping answering the phones. Our phones ring off the wall from caseworkers, the clients, to donors wanting to donate furniture, so any help with that is always appreciated. And then anyone that wants, that has a truck and a partner that want to say, hey, on Tuesday, I can come and deliver, you know, a bed to a kid. You just call us, we'll schedule that for you, and come on down, and you can deliver that bed for us. Did anyone have, thank you, and anybody have any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Robinson?
Not a question, actually. I just want to say that I am really impressed with what you do. I knew about it, but I didn't have any idea of the magnitude, and I think it's wonderful, and I hope to support you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
The counselors. Counselor Olson.
Oh, yes. Are you the only organization that does that here in the state?
There's an organization in Portland that does Portland and Vancouver Community Warehouse.
Okay. Well, I noticed you mentioned people came from all over to, and you rescued them, so thank you for doing it.
Oh, of course.
And thank you for several years ago, taking a big, old tube-type television set.
Oh, you're welcome.
I hope it's still cracking away someplace.
Families need TV night.
Right. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Bartholomew. Thank you, Nick.
I have a question about, I know you provide beds. Where do you get your mattresses from? Because I know there's the issue with used mattresses.
Used mattresses. Well, we, our guys are trained monthly for issues. We've never had any issues before, but everything that we take, doesn't matter. You can have the bed bugs on a couch. You can go to the movie theater and get it off from the cloth, so it just, it's everywhere. But, so my guys are trained monthly of what to look for. We've never had an issue, but everything we get is in good use condition. We have really high health and safety standards, so if there's anything on the bed, we won't take it. And knock on wood, we have never, we've been in existence since 1998, and we've never had an issue. My guys are strict.
Counselor Johnson.
Michelle. Do you take baby cribs?
If they have not been recalled.
Okay, I was going to say, because I, we raised a couple of grandkids, and we had an old crib that was given to us, and no one would take it because you have to have meet some standards and stuff. So would you, I mean, if it's in great shape, would you take it, like you say, as long as it's not been recalled, which this one hasn't because, you know, it was an old one, but we had to actually throw it away, unfortunately.
Yeah, as long as they have not been recalled, we can, we can take that. The only thing that we can't take as far as, like, baby furniture is car seats.
Oh, yeah, I can understand.
That's the only thing we can't take.
I have one of those, too.
Yeah, we can't take those.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone outside? Well, thank you very much for coming and speaking with us this evening. That's very helpful, and I'm hoping the viewers that are watching this back or watching it live will give you a call and set up a time to work with you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. 2020, 2021 CBD, CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report and Community Needs. Beth Friedlander is going to speak to us, or are you going to do that? Beth, oh, she's right, I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here.
I have some things to do. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on the 2021 CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report and Community Needs. Directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published in the council agenda. I now declare the public hearing open at 6:23 PM. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, I do have a short presentation to share. So I'm going to share my screen now. Hopefully you guys are now seeing the slideshow.
Yes, we are.
All right, excellent, thank you. So as you mentioned, I'm here to present on the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as just the Annual Report or the CAPR, and that's for the Community Development Block Grant. So on this slide, you'll see kind of the overarching program goal for the Community Development Block Grant. But for 2021, our specific goals were to create economic opportunities, continue to respond to COVID-19, reduce homelessness, provide needed public services, and preserve affordable housing and create affordable housing opportunities. So just going through kind of our accomplishments for this past program year, in terms of preventing and responding to COVID-19, we were able to support 13 businesses with emergency grants, and Community Lending Works was the partner that we worked with on that. So we provided them funding, and they provided the business grants. And as a result, 74 jobs were either created or retained. And then Community Services Consortium provided emergency housing assistance to three households, which prevented eviction and/or homelessness for those households. And then finally, the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, and Family Tree Relief Nursery provided childcare, youth services, and family support, including like social and emotional development for children who had been isolated as a result of COVID-19, childcare to families who were having difficulty finding childcare as a result of COVID-19, and working with youth to provide distance learning opportunities and technical assistance to families that were needing to take advantage of that. And then in terms of reducing homelessness, so we provided funding to two of the shelters that serve adults to repair their facilities or make improvements on their facilities. So Albany Helping Hands used those funds to get a new roof, and Second Chance Shelter repaired their failing HVAC system. And then finally, we provided services, or we provided funds for Jackson Street Youth Services to provide staff time for their shelter, which provided shelter to 26 youth in the last year. So some of the public services that we were able to support were child abuse prevention, the Senior Companion Program, and then as we just heard from Furniture Share, we were able to support that program and all the work that they do to help Albany residents furnish their home and get healthy food. So for preserving affordable housing, we worked with Dev Northwest and their low-income homeowner rehab loan program, and three houses were able to do rehabilitation projects. And then finally, we were able to offer two fair housing trainings, and we collaborated with the City of Corvallis to offer one to public officials and staff, and another one to landlords.
Beth?
Yes.
One question I noticed on that page right there, and it's also on Attachment A. You're talking about the preserve affordable housing with Dev Northwest. On Attachment A, it talks about the program has been canceled due to housing prices, and I'm just wondering if that is any way, shape, or form tangentially connected to their application that they've just come forward for the, a portion of the grant that we have available?
So previously, we had funding that was dedicated to a home down payment assistance program for low-income people that were seeking to buy a home. And because of housing prices, that program was just really difficult to find people that we could support and have enough funding for them to be able to feasibly have the down payment needed to buy a home. So it's not related to the, to the project that they are now applying for funding through, you know, our, the Senate Bill 5561, because that is a project where they're trying to build affordable housing rather than help people buy homes. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Okay. So some of the money that was previously dedicated to the Down Payment Assistance Program was moved into the Housing Rehab Loan Program, where it could be better used to support low-income homeowners. So just a little bit about who was served this past year. About 12% of the people that were served were Latino or Hispanic, and the rest were not. As you can see with the race, the bulk of the people that were served were white, but that is in line with what we see in Albany's general demographics. And then finally, about 97% of the people that were served through this program were either extremely low-income or what are called presumed benefit, which means that they're in a population that we assume is low-income, like seniors, people with disabilities, people who are homeless. So really, this year, we did an excellent job supporting the people that this program is intended to support, which is those who are low-income. So at this time, we're also seeking input on our community needs for... So at this time, we're also seeking input on our community needs for, to inform our next five-year plan. And so I wanted to make sure that those opportunities were shared tonight, too. So of course, any public comment that's shared tonight will be used for our next plan. But I also wanted to point out that we have a survey that's available on the city website, on our Community Development Block Grant webpage. So any residents of Albany or any service providers that serve Albany residents are welcome to take that survey so that we know what people's priorities and needs are, so that we can plan accordingly for the next five years. And then additionally, we are working with agencies, doing agency consultations where people that are providing services or housing or otherwise work with low-income or moderate-income residents of Albany are coming to our Community Development Commission and sharing their perspective on what they see that their clients need and any gaps or priorities so that we can plan accordingly. And so any other comments around our community needs also can be directed to me via email so that I can include that as we plan going forward. So today, we have had one letter in support of our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. So I was going to read that and then I can open the floor up to any other public comments. So, dear Mayor and City Councilors, my name is Rebecca Weinsteiner and I am the Community Director of Lynn and Benton Counties for Dev Northwest. I am providing written testimony on behalf of Liza Newcomb, our Community Repair Manager, in support of the C D B G Annual Report. Everyone deserves a community of opportunity in a good, affordable home with access to the neighborhood resources we all need to succeed in life. We are in a housing crisis and we know that the hard-working, low-income residents of Albany are having to make tough choices like fixing an essential home repair or putting food on the table. We know that housing gives people an opportunity to build better lives and that to succeed, you need a place to call home. Working with the City of Albany, Dev Northwest has deployed critical C D B G funds to address the deteriorating housing stock with affordable home repair loans to keep existing homes in Albany safe and healthy. One of our most recent successes includes providing a family of five caring for adult children living with disabilities with a new roof, new windows, and a more efficient heating and cooling system. Essential repairs like these not only keep a vulnerable family housed, they reduce monthly expenses during a time of inflation when budgets are squeezed more than ever. I am testifying in support that the City of Albany's C D B G programs have been essential in our work to preserve affordable housing, reduce homelessness, provide needed public services, enhance economic opportunities, and increase accessibility for all Albany community members. Thank you, Rebecca Weinsteiner. And with that, I, concluding, concluding my presentation.
So I will now, thank you very much, Beth. I will now call on those who wish to speak in the gallery. Hearing none. I declare the public hearing closed at this time at six thirty-two P M. Counsel, would you like to just, have any questions for Beth? Counselor Johnson?
And Beth, this is, I looked all the way through and I couldn't find it and it's probably right there in front of me. What is the difference between C D B G and C D B G dash C V? What's the difference in funding?
Yeah, so the C D B G is the funding that we get annually regardless of circumstances. The C D B G C V funding is the CARES Act funding that was specifically received to respond to COVID-19.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Any other counselors? Well, thank you, Beth, well done.
Thank you.
Now, we were, it says vote on something. We're not supposed to vote on anything in this room, right? Allison, there's nothing to vote on.
No, in past, the counselors have sometimes passed a motion in support, but they don't require anything as far as I understand.
Counsel, would you like to pass a motion in support of this?
Sure, absolutely.
Are you making a motion?
I move that we support the vision and program, the annual CAPR report.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. You could barely hear, but I heard her. Okay, thank you very much, Beth, again, for showing tonight. Thank you, Ann, for the report. Next on the agenda is business from the public after. Do you have a sheet? I have three people signed up to speak for business from the public. Business from the public is three minutes and then we'll talk, we'll talk through any questions or stuff with the counsel after your speak. So first on the agenda for tonight is Darla Luther. Can you tell us who you are? I already said it, but go ahead and tell us who you are.
I'm Darla Luther.
Hi, Darla.
Hi.
Timer.
So I guess what I'd like to start with is first to thank you all for letting me be here tonight and seeing you all. And I just wanted to explain my circumstances. I think you all got a packet regarding the situation with the AMC and eleven-point-oh-one-point-zero-one-zero through two-two-five regarding water systems and wells. We have a home in North Albany that was built in nineteen-seventy-two and the property has a well on it. It was also installed in nineteen-seventy-two. There is no connection to the city water system in our residence at all. It's only used to water our lawns. There's one line and three spigots that are above ground off that line. And I was advised by the city that if I don't comply with getting a backflow prevention device, then my city water would be discontinued. So in that, I did some research and questioned the municipal code on this and found that the municipal code, in fact, does provide kind of a remedy, which was AMC zero-one-zero-two-two-zero-five, by saying that we could actually provide information to the city, which I did. And did that through American Leak Detection Services, who came out and evaluated our, our existing well and the line that runs to it. They determined that there was no cross connection, no backflow, none of that going on. So I guess what I wanted to say to City Council is I think that there's been a misinterpretation on the city side and limited information provided to the public as far as what can remedy a cross connection if there was one found. City ordinance currently says that if, if a cross connection is found, the customer will be given sixty days to correct the problem or install and approve backflow prevention assembly. I don't have any backflow issue at my property. I don't have any cross connection at my property. Should have ended there. Instead, I was given no other avenue to go, no other explanation. Just get the backflow device or you're going to have your water shut off. This isn't correct and I understand and agree that rules and regulations are important. I'm not new to the municipal codes. I am a public servant and I apply those municipal, municipal codes and interpret them on a daily basis. So I guess what I needed to say, too, is that it's our responsibility as public servants to responsibly apply the rules and regulations that, and do that within the spirit and intent in which those rules were written. And I don't believe that, that, that is what was done in this case. Our, we need to apply those rules and regulations fairly and compassionately to Albany citizens. Again, I'm just going to say that I, I do not have a cross connection. That has been shown by the.
Thank you, Darla.
That's it, are we done? Okay. That was three minutes?
Yeah, it was three minutes.
Oh, my gosh.
Is she done with her statement?
She started repeating herself and so I ended it. Yes, she did.
I, I do.
Are you done with your talk?
Pardon me?
Are you done with what you wanted to say to us?
I wanted to say that I don't think the City of Albany is justified in trying to cut off my water when I've proven to them that I have no cross connection, is the bottom line.
Thank you. So counsel, do you have any questions? Any more questions? That's what I was getting to.
Do we have somebody here from engineering to explain why they're insisting that she have a cross connection device?
Does anyone from Public Works or Water or?
Yes, Counsel, I'm here, Scott LaRocque.
Scott LaRocque.
So we have a, a couple of different codes in there. And the reason why we would require a backflow device on a well.
I can barely hear you. I got it. Your sound dropped out.
He's not talking into the microphone.
Okay, you there?
Yes.
Okay. So our code, our code is very, is, is pretty clear. And the reason why we would require a device on a well is because the way our code is written, it, it allows for us to require it when there is a, when a well is present, if there is a cross connection or the potential to have a cross connection. It is this way and several water systems have it this way because it's a good, a good way to reduce our risk. Cross connections can happen very, very easily. And in Darla's case, the irrigation that runs off of her well is within a few feet of her home. And that's, you know, that's there. It's, I'm trying to, sorry, I apologize. We're trying to do our best to reduce our risk. I mean, when wells are there, it's easy to make a connection. And if a connection was made, most, most of the time, vast majority of the time, it's made by mistake. And because we are not on the property, we don't manage the piping. We can't see what's going on and we wouldn't be going back to these properties to check. The safest and the best management practice is to require a device at the service that would then prevent, in the event that there was a cross connection, that water from the well doesn't have the opportunity to go back and then be introduced into our distribution system.
So you're assuming that we're going to be losing pressure in our distribution system on a fairly regular basis? Is that the problem?
Well, it could happen during the loss of pressure. It could happen if the well, the pressure at the well is, on the pump is, is turned up at any point in time.
So, so I'm confused. So her system is isolated from our system, right? Is that what I heard?
It's totally separate from it, yeah.
So we don't believe, we don't necessarily believe that her, her well is connected to our system. But we're trying to protect against the potential that if it ever did.
So let me help. The well is not connected to the house. The house is connected to city water. The code that Darla quoted is section two-twenty, which says, when a cross connection exists, the private party has sixty days to remedy the cross connection. The next section, section two-twenty-five, says, "A backflow prevention device shall be installed where there is," and there's a list of categories. The first one is an auxiliary water system, which is or could be connected to the city's water system. This is not an uncommon situation. We have over three hundred properties that we know of in town that have wells in addition to being on city water. And the risk is that there could be a depressurization in the system or the well pump could over-pressurize the city water and the water could flow backwards into the street. I will tell you from personal experience that when you dig up the ground, you cannot tell the difference between the PVC pipe that goes to your sprinkler and the PVC, PVC pipe that goes to your house. Having recently cut my PVC pipe that goes to my house accidentally. Okay, so the, the language exists because it's not uncommon for accidental cross connections to be made. Professional plumbers do it, homeowners do it. It's very common. The first priority, the city is required to have a backflow prevention program. And the backflow prevention rules require us to take proactive steps to protect the safety and health of the city water system. This has been our rule for decades and has been enforced with, like I said, over three hundred properties. So it doesn't, the only time that we have given an exception is on very large properties that have a city water connection and they have a well and their irrigation system is two hundred feet away from the closest city water line. Then we, like, okay, well, that's probably reasonably not going to get cross-connected, so we don't require it in that situation. In this situation, it's a typical residential lot in North Albany. It's not a huge lot, it's bigger than modern lots, but it's close enough that it does represent a risk. So that's why the rule is written the way it is. And we've interpreted it the same way for, I don't know, thirty years or however long we've had it on the books.
Thank you. Counselor Novak?
Yes. I want to thank Mrs. Luther for the report she provided us. I think it makes it very clear that there is no connection. And I'm baffled, quite honestly. If there's no connection, there is no connection. There hasn't been a connection between the city water connected to the home and the well in fifty years. There's not going to be a connection. Why, why are we, to, to, to my mind, this is, this is, I'm sure it's not intended, but it certainly seems like harassment. She has gone out of her way to provide clear evidence from the people who do this for a living, you know, examine these things and they showed that there's no connection. The language says, if there's a connection, then you have to do the backflow thing. Ms. Luther has backflow for her home. There's no connection between the home and the well. That, this, this report shows that, no connection. She has no plans to make a connection. There has never been a connection for fifty years. I, I think, forgive me, but this is government overreach on the local level in the name of your, for your health and safety. That's how I see it.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Kupczynski.
Counselor Novak, did you hear or listen to what Director Bailey said?
Yes, I did.
That completely abrogates what you just said.
Well, that's your opinion.
Yes, thank you.
Any other counselor? Counselor Smith?
I, what counts, what Director Bailey said was if there is the potential for a connection, that's one of the, that's one of the factors. If there's a potential for the connection.
Ms. Smith, can I, can I please just say something on that?
This is not intended for a discussion back and forth with us. You gave us your information, we received cities.
When are we going to have a discussion of it?
Well, you can talk about their business from the council, but it's not for discussion with the person that spoke. She, we asked staff.
I, I would like to have the facts of the case, Your Honor.
Well, we have the facts right in front of you.
Well, I think.
And the staffs right here just gave us their facts.
And her facts, her facts don't count for anything.
If you let me finish my statement, we can ask the staff to look at it again and bring us back a report. I'm fine with that.
Well, I'm not. I think we ought to solve it tonight.
Well, we have other people waiting and so we can talk about it later. I'd rather have her come back later after the staff reviews the report.
So she needs to sit through the meeting and then we discuss it?
I said.
I think it's a waste of her time, it's a waste of our time.
You're wasting my time right now.
I am, yes.
So we're going to have staff.
And I think your time needs wasting.
There it is.
I do.
There it is. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. And please have Chris, Director Bailey, reach out with her and have a discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Catherine Sandoval. Thank you, Catherine.
Hello. I am here again about Senior Center. And Jean wasn't able to make it tonight, but he wanted to let you know that he, he hasn't heard anything about what's happening with the Senior Center and the pool tables. And he wanted to say that there will, if they buy cheap tables, they won't use them. That he will be happy to go to help pick things out, but he doesn't want the, the cheap version. He won't make it real expensive either, but he, he wants something good. So he can be contacted to, to assist in making decisions. So he can be contacted to, uh, to assist in making decisions about that. And, uh, I would like to say that I don't, I would like to see the, the Senior Center sign back up on the wall outside so that we know that that is where the Senior Center is. And it is a, uh, the Senior Center was able to assist in getting money for the community and then it was kind of dumped on. And, uh, that's just plain old not fair. And, and we need to have, uh, people from the senior citizens of Albany helping to make decisions. You said a man from Portland gave you the idea to not use the Senior Center sign. Well, that doesn't make sense to me. When you have seniors who've been using the Senior Center, living in Albany, uh, to ask. So I'm, I'm requesting that you have some kind of a panel that is, uh, able to give advice to some of the decisions that are made about the community center. And also the, September is, in addition to, uh, commemorating the Hispanics, it's also Senior Citizens Month. So that's just, uh, something that I wanted to present.
Thank you. We'll take another advisement and we'll reach out with the Parks and Rec Director and City Management and have a conversation about that. Did you leave a number so somebody can get ahold of you should there be another discussion needed? You have, you have her number? You have her number?
Yes, I have her phone number.
Okay, thank you. Next is, uh, ADA Director Lisa Grotto.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Grotto. I'm the Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association and I just wanted to do a quick downtown update. Uh, I wanted to let you know that we have a play opening up downtown. It's a comedy and that would be called Moon Over Buffalo and that will be starting at Albany Civic Theater on September 16th and it runs through October 1st. Also wanted to say that there have been some amazing partnerships recently and that we wanted to, uh, thank the community as well as the city. Recently, we've had, uh, an event that wrapped up that you may be familiar with. It was Movies at Montith. We had a night where Albany Fire and Albany Police responded to help put up the screen because we were shorthanded. So I wanted to make sure we had done a public shout out on that. Also, uh, the hanging baskets, we're always, uh, happy to partner with the city on those and appreciate that we're under contract to help take care of the ones around the building. And yes, they're coming down soon. So that's, they, they're looking sad and we know that they're coming down this weekend. Um, the Albany Block Party was an amazing event, um, and wanted to recognize the, all the different partnerships there. Thank you, Mayor Johnson for attending and also Public Works, Albany Police Department, Albany Park and Rec and Albany Fire for everything they did to make that safe and wonderful an event. And of course, the Garage for putting it on and bringing in amazing talent and, uh, creating a first annual event that we are very excited to have been part of. Um, and also wanted to thank them for a very generous contribution, uh, that they made to the Downtown Association as a partner. Um, also recently was the, um, Craft Brew Smackdown where we partner with, um, the, uh, Greater Albany Rotary and, uh, they brought their donation check in to us today. So we appreciate the partnership we have there. We provide the locations. They provide the beer. We, everybody provides the fun. So, um, another great event that just happened was the Antiques in the Streets. This year, uh, the beneficiary on that was the Albany Firefighter Community Assistance Fund. And it was wonderful to see the, uh, the team down there and the wonderful fire trucks that they shared. So, uh, great attendance, beautiful weather. Somebody must have taken care of that. And one last event that was very fun was the Albany Beer Run. Uh, they call it a run in quotes because it's .3 miles. It goes from Kalapuya Brewery to Deluxe Brewery with a break in the middle if you need it. Uh, if you don't know, that's .3 meters and you do get a commemorative sticker to show your run. And, uh, it is put on, uh, by the Lions, uh, from Corvallis. We want, think that they come to our town. And, uh, this year their beneficiary were for the Four-Legged Friends of Heartland Humane Society. Uh, they rotate between there and Safe Haven, I believe.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to thank everybody and I'm over time.
Well done. Thank you very much. You have, you have works, um, newsletters for us?
I will give you newsletters afterwards.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have newsletters available afterwards and the Basket Takedown is on Sunday. If anyone wants to come help us from 9 to 12.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in attendance or virtually would like, did not, did not sign up, would like to speak? Thank you. Number six on the agenda item is, uh, second reading of an ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC 7 dot 08 dot 050, unnecessary noise, Officer Chendell. Second reading? I can't hear you.
And no, there we go.
There we go.
Yeah, this is the second reading.
Yep. Yes.
Nope, it's off again.
How about that?
Yes.
His, his switch works my mic. There you go. All right. We'll see together. We're a good team. All right, an ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC, section 7.08.050, unnecessary noise.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second? A motion is made. Okay, got that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Did you get everything you need, Allison? Thank you. Next on the agenda, number seven is adoption of the consent calendar. Would the council like to make a motion?
Sir?
Yes.
Um, I am requesting a correction on item three. It's written, uh, this is page 54, the minutes from August 24th. That's item three. It's written, "Novak said taking away things the seniors like to do is effectively kicking them out." I need to point out to you all, I never said this. If you listen to my words, I did not even imply it, nor did I infer it. The words "kicked out" were used by both Counselor Olson and Peter Trodston in exchanges prior to my speaking. I asked if we might be able to bring back books for the seniors. Ms. Sandoval is here. She was here with her husband. I asked for the return of their pool table.
What page, Counselor?
Page 54.
Okay.
Is the reference that I'm asking for an amendment where I quoted to you the line, "Novak said, 'Taking away things the seniors like to do is effectively kicking them out.'" I did not say those words and I do not want them in the public record. I'm telling you what I did say. I reviewed the information to, again, summarize. After Ms. Sandoval and her husband spoke, I asked if we could bring books back for the seniors for their library. I requested the return of a pool table and Mr. Sandoval said, "Can we have two?" And then I asked if, um, if I, I mentioned computer equipment and said that I have some that I would like to donate if we could do that sort of thing. That's what I said. And then after that, I spoke on behalf of constituents who are greatly concerned about public safety. For the record, because it is public record, I would like these things changed.
Okay, so Allison, could you please, um, review that?
We'll review it again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You said something?
Thank you, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is that the only thing you want to make? So I'll make a note there. Page 54.
Yes, it's item three.
Item three.
Which is from the August 24th minutes.
Okay, I see it now. All right, thank you. So item four, item three.
I don't know if it's necessary, but it's not my husband.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Thank you for the, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
So Counselor, go ahead.
Yeah, I move we adopt the consent calendar with changes as noted by Counselor Novak.
All those, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Perfect. And next item is item eight. Staff reports reclassification of the position of, by Eric Ikenoy. Did I say that right? Okay.
All right, okay, good job. Talking into the mic. Yeah, we just have, uh, a couple positions we've been unable to fill and so we'd like to change one from an aide position to an assistant position. We're hoping that a slightly higher wage will attract more candidates who would like to take the job. And then we had a resignation in August. And we'd like to increase that position from 20 hours to 26 hours. And this is all money that's already in our budget. It's just rearranging the positions, basically.
Counsel, any questions for the director, the librarian?
Sir?
Sensible.
I believe I read that you have the funds to do this in the budget. Great. And I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
That's fine.
You have a motion?
I move to approve the reclassification as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Your motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next is SDC Financing, Director Jaeger, our Finance Director. On page 74, your packet.
Okay, good evening. Um, we have a request for SDC financing. It's on the property at 2515 Gary Street. Uh, there is currently a market there. They want to put in a gas station. He's already purchased the permit, so this one's a little bit different than normal. Usually when people come in and want to finance their SDCs, uh, they do that before they actually get the permits. He had some concerns about water tables and getting the construction started, so he paid for those, but he would like us to retroactively let him finance that. Um, it's 6.55% interest. It's a 10-year period, so he can either pay, uh, monthly or semi-annually. And, you know, honestly, we're just asking for counsel to give us direction on the, on where you want to go with that.
So counsel, any questions?
How often do we do these? They, they come up rarely, is that right?
They don't come up very often.
He already has a really big hole in the ground.
Yes, he does.
I would, I would move to, to, uh, grant the financing as requested.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Before we do that, anybody else have anything they want to say?
I'm just clarifying. You, you said that he actually already paid for all of these things.
He did.
And now he wants to get that money back and pay us on a, on a loan type basis.
Correct, up to the, up to the full amount. I don't know if his intention is to do the full amount. But yes, that's, that's what he wants to do.
Okay, thank you.
So this is not a common occurrence?
This is the first time I know of this happening, um, but even SDC financings don't happen very often.
You did mention 6.65% interest, so if we go ahead with this, then the city's getting a hefty interest off of it.
6.55%.
Yeah, correct.
55%. Counsel, have you heard enough? Counselor Olson?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, all those in favor, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director? Next is Business from the Council. Uh, Counselor Olson, you're up first.
Uh, yes, I, um, uh, it's not so hot today and it's not so appropriate. But, um, I, I noticed that, uh, in the previous weeks when it has been hot, uh, most of my neighbors have their air conditioners running. And I haven't felt the need to, uh, uh, have, run air conditioning and I don't have any air conditioning. I, I have shade trees along the south side of my house. My house cools off at night when the weather cools off and I'm able to have it, be comfortable for the daytime during the almost 100-degree weather that we've been having. And yet I see that our city tree people, uh, will apparently cut any tree where there's an excuse. And I would like to, if, find some way to encourage that we grow mature trees that will provide shade and, or reduce the temperature of our, um, residential areas. And surprisingly, I've read articles to that effect. National Geographic, I think, was the last one, talking about Los Angeles where the downtown part of Los Angeles, where the more affluent people live and apparently are able to protect their shade trees is, uh, usually five or six or seven degrees cooler than the less affluent part of town where there are no trees. So, I would like to encourage our staff to see if they can find some way, maybe we need a discussion about whether we should be, uh, essentially lumbering our, um, our, our town that we can, uh, have bigger, better shade trees in the future. Thank you.
I do have a question. We have, we have a actual horticulturist on the Tree Commission. Are they consulting the Tree Commission before they make these cuts?
Uh, sometimes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Yes.
I also know that there's a process that people just like.
No, it's not your time, but you can go and respond to Counselor Olson.
Okay, I also know that the city has a process before anybody can just arbitrarily cut down a tree of a certain size. But to your comments, Counselor Olson, I'll take them forward and pass them on to Parks and Rec, who's responsible for the trees.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Bartholomew.
Uh, thank you. I was listening to our, our, um, senior here representing the senior sen, uh, the Senior and Community Center and I, I was thinking that the request for the sign to have senior on it, I thought, uh, Community and Senior Center sounds like a reasonable, uh, request because, um, that is the place that our moderate seniors, um, gather. And I think it's important that we recognize and not just, not just, uh, kind of eliminate that as part of the community.
Can we take that back to Counselor, um, excuse me, to Dracula Dan as well? Thank you. Is that it, Counselor? Counselor Novak?
I'm glad, Counselor Bartholomew, that you said that because I think that's a great idea. We have the church, which is a community center, and forgive me, I just forgot the name of them. Starts with a C.
Cumberland.
The.
Cumberland.
Cumberland, right. So Cumberland, the whole deal with Cumberland was that's a community center. And I think Counselor Olson has mentioned this before too. We have something that has designated a community center, so I, I think it would be right and good to honor our seniors by putting that back in the name and calling it the, the Senior and Community Center. They, they deserve that. I will be sending something to you all through Allison, probably tomorrow. It has to do with concerns that have been brought to me by constituents. And so you can just be on the lookout for that and I'll try to include a small explanation. Yeah, public safety is a very big deal and, um, I, I know we're all approached often by people who, you know, bring their concerns to us, so I will be sharing these with you. I'm sure to think of something after I give my time away, so, I'll, but I'll go ahead and yield because I, I, I can't think of anything else at this moment outside of that, those things.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Smith?
Nothing, thank you.
Well, I had, um, a couple, just a couple of things. I was blessed enough to be doing the If I Were a Mayor contest last year and because of that, I formed relationships with school teachers and, and principals and I went to visit Sunrise Elementary's first grade class. And I walked into school after they buzzed me in and this young lady goes, "Are you the mayor?" And then I was walking down the hallway and she goes, "I'm going to escort you to Miss May's classroom." And so I escorted me to the classroom and these first graders created their own If I Were a Mayor contest. Isn't that amazing? These young people are asking questions about the city because their parents.
These young people are asking questions about the city because their parents are watching the City Council meeting. That's engagement. We need to do more of that because we're making decisions for their children right now. I'm pretty excited about the next contest if I get the opportunity to do it, but because of that, I received an email later in the day, a second-grade teacher, the teacher of social science studies, would like one of us, me and one of you guys, to come out and join us. And so I'll be inviting one of you to come with me to the next school. I think it's an opportunity for us as city leaders, elected leaders, to connect with our youth and partner with the school system to talk about civics and public engagement and how to vote and what we do for the city. And other than that, I mentioned earlier that I had a wonderful weekend. I missed the Antiques in the Streets. I met my son's future in-laws. It was a wonderful family gathering at the baby shower for my granddaughter, who'll be here shortly. And other than that, I'm all good. Yes, Counselor?
I didn't want to interrupt you, but you forgot me.
I did. I went down, oh my God. I am so sorry, Counsel Johnson.
That's okay.
Coffee's on me next time.
That's all right. I just wanted to bring to the attention something that has been happening, and I'm sure our city attorney knows this, but the headline is Oregon District Attorneys Worry That New State Hospital Status Will Affect Public Safety. And then it says about the district judge signed a ruling that limits how long people charged with crimes can stay at the state hospital. So this is going to send more mentally challenged people to our city. And we've already got, I mean, I don't know what we're going to do. We can't handle what we have now, and if they start releasing people before they're better, I mean, it just makes no sense to me, but I just wondered if there's anything that you've heard, Sean? I don't know.
We both have to be on, okay.
It clicked on.
It's like two, yeah, we both have to be hooked on there. I have heard it, and I definitely share your concern. Yes, I mean, there's been a lot of concern from the Counsel and from staff and different folks from the community about a lot of the new laws that are being passed and how that affects the city and the livability of the city. And it's not everybody that has these concerns, but a lot of people do. But they're coming, I mean, without getting too in the weeds to say, they're coming from elected officials, people that are up in Salem, that are elected officials are making these decisions, they're making these laws, they're passing these bills that say, you know, that, you know, for example, decriminalize certain amounts of heroin or methamphetamines and things like that. That, yeah, I mean, that's what the voters are voting for right now. I mean, that's, it does, as the city attorney, and my role as city attorney, that you don't, most of you don't see, is that we also run the municipal court and prosecute in the municipal court. And so I see a lot of this on a weekly basis, and it is frustrating because the police, their hands are tied a lot of times. You heard from Chief Harman and Sheriff Duncan a couple of weeks back, they feel like their hands are tied and who they can hold. I mean, there's some bizarre rules right now where you can, if you get arrested for not showing up for court, they can take you to jail. Okay, but if you're arrested for a simple assault on a police officer, they have to cite you and release you and tell you to go back to, show up at court later on. Those things are things that are being passed in Salem right now, and like I said, it is frustrating, but no, I mean, there's not anything that the city by itself can do without help from, you know, our state representatives and so, but if, anything we can do, we're trying, I will say that, so.
Yes, so you have seen a lot of this coming through the municipal court, then?
We have, yeah, and I mean, as you're talking about the mental health issue, we have Mental Health Court now, which has actually been somewhat successful, I believe, in my opinion. You heard Judge Reed talk about that a lot, too. He's been very happy with it as well. We had a situation before that where we had some of our court-appointed lawyers that almost every one of their clients, they would ask for aid and assist. On their clients, they weren't able to aid and assist on their own behalf, and knowing that the city would have to incur those costs, that they didn't have the money, and assuming the city would dismiss their case every time if they asked for aid and assist. And there was a time prior to me coming here where that was happening. They were dismissing almost every time someone asked for aid and assist, the city would go, "Oh, never mind, we'll dismiss the case." We finally got that kind of shored up, and so now that doesn't happen anymore, but then, you know, and also the help of Mental Health Court and working with Lynn County Mental Health has been successful for the most part. There's been a few of their clients, there are people that have not successfully completed the program they entered into, but we also have some that say they're not going to do it. They'll go in front of the judge, and he asks, "Hey, would you like to go into Mental Health Court?" And they're like, "No, we're not going to do that. I'm not going to do anything." You know, so, yeah, it can be frustrating.
It really is, you know, because you worry, it's already dangerous in our parks and our pathways, walkways and stuff, and if this happens, you know, I don't know what the state is thinking that, you know, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm thinking that maybe at this LLC conference, I know there's nothing set right now that I know of as far as the work sessions and stuff, but I think this is just really an issue that somehow we need to, if we have to lobby really hard, I don't know, maybe it'll change when we have the election in November. I don't know. I don't know. But it just makes me sick, it really does.
Thank you. Is that it, Beth, Counsel Johnson? Matilda had a question for the city attorney.
Yes, and I think I mentioned this, it was probably that very same meeting with the sheriff and the chief of police mentioning how their hands were tied, and I don't know who I asked, whether it's you or the city manager or Sean, if it's you, but home rule, we're supposed to have that. Can we not, in this town, create our own ordinances and live by them so that we have public safety?
Yes, yes and no. So we can, we have home rule in the state of Oregon, so we do create our own ordinances, but those ordinances can't conflict with state law. So state law overrides the ordinances, and likewise, federal law can...
Superoce that.
Superoce the state. So, yeah, we're, we can only create laws that the state hasn't already kind of stepped into and taken control of, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, city attorney. Next on the agenda item, let me get back to my homework here. So we're going to recess to, city manager's report, please. You've cut your hair.
I did, yes, and I'm not quite as tall. I've kind of shrunk a little bit since the last meeting. Peter Trozen obviously is not here, and I'm filling in for him. He didn't have anything to report to you, but as fire chief, and I have a captive audience, I do have a couple items for you from the fire department. Just wanted to thank Lisa and the Downtown Association and Antiques in the Streets. Our nonprofit will receive a sizable donation from them, from the events that occurred on Saturday, and then also a thank you to past and present Albany Fire Department members for volunteering to help get the event going and off. Also downtown this weekend on Sunday was 9/11 ceremony held at the courthouse steps. And then lastly, I'll be bringing to you either next meeting or the following. We found out on Monday that we received $634,000 to help us purchase a new fire truck. So a new fire truck is anywhere between $750,000 and $800,000.
Well done.
So this is a sizable piece of that. And well done to Rachel Bottomiller. She was the champion behind completing the grant, and we are so happy for her. She deserved to win. She's done a lot of grants for us, and it's good to get one in the win column. So you'll hear from me here in the next meeting or two.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. So the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transactions in accordance with ORS 192.660 subsection 2 subsection E and discussing the labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.660 subsection 2 subsection D. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will re-admit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council members, when the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made during the executive session. I now recess the executive session at 7:20 PM.
I've got a question, Your Honor.
Yes.
And we're going to continue the discussion of my constituent's water problem after the executive session.
Yes.
So she has to sit out there in the hallway after the executive session in order to have us discuss...
Well, you had an opportunity during Business from the Counsel to address the matter, so we're going to, we've moved on the agenda, we'll do it after the executive session.
Sorry about that, Ms. Wilson.
I think that's absurd.
I think that's absurd.
...
Yes, let's do the two property ones first and then we'll do the negotiations last. So council would like to make a motion on the
Yes, let's do, let's do the two property ones first and then we'll do the other negotiations last. So council would like to make a motion on the property.
I move to authorize staff to enter into negotiations for the transaction of real property within the city.
Second.
Have a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye.
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 You say something? Those opposed say no.
No.
Counselor Novak. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Forgive me, would you be so kind and repeat this first one? I was making notes and I.
Oh, the motion, you mean?
Yes.
But Counselor.
I move the, to authorize staff to enter into negotiations for the transaction of real property within the city.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
No.
Counselor Novak.
I say yes with the understanding that this is nothing more than the allowing them to negotiate.
Counselor Bartholomew.
No.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes.
Four to two, it passes.
Thank you. It's the second one on the, the river property along the canal.
I move that we authorize city to enter contract negotiations with Lynn County for property acquisition.
It's Lebanon, City of Lebanon.
City of Lebanon, pardon me. We end with an L, my.
Second.
We have motion in the second. All those in favor, yes?
Aye.
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 Well, wait, wait, Counselor Bartholomew had something. Try and, try and, sale of property.
They would have the acquisition, we would be doing the sale.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, motion passes. Next one is labor negotiations.
I move that we authorize the city to authorize contract with, with ACTME for the upcoming biennium.
Second.
We have motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
She's.
Oh, you haven't, you haven't. We don't do it again? So we got it right? Go ahead, Counselor.
I move to ratify the ACTME general unit and transit unit successor bargaining agreements as presented by the H R Director.
Second.
Now, motion in the second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Director Roten, thank you very much, well done. Okay, we can bring people in now.
We could have brought him in for that, too, but.
He needs to know that she can come in, though. She doesn't know that.
You gonna stick around, Chris, Dr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience, Darla. We're finished conducting our business. Please have a seat.
Counselor, Counselor Olson, you had questions?
Uh, yes, I, uh, I'm wondering, how many times have we had, um, cross connections between wells for watering the lawn and, um, city water that is used in the house? And I'd like to ask, uh, this is Mrs. Luther, isn't it? Yes. Uh, do you water your lawn with city water or strictly with your well water?
I water half the yard, I water half the yard with the well and then the other side doesn't, I can't get the well water over there, so I water city water on the other side.
And how far across is that approximately?
Uh, over, over a hundred feet, 150 feet, maybe?
Maybe you need another hose.
To answer the first part of your question, I don't know if we have data, I don't have data off the top of my head of properties that have a physical connection of their well supply with the line that comes from the city supply. But we have over 300 homes in town that we know of that have wells that are on city water and they are required to provide a backflow device. We've had, since we, since we found Ms. Luther's well, we found two more. And these are, we've had a backflow device program for years. The reason these are just being found now is because we really have no way of knowing. We don't keep a well registry. But since this started, we have found two other properties, very same situation, one of which complied and installed their backflow device, the other chose to disconnect from city water, which is fine. Um, and so they removed their city water connection or using their well for their house water, either of which is fine solution. Our goal is to, and requirement is to protect the city water system. That's why the requirement exists. Um, the other thing I would say is that the assertion, the code, um, has different sections that apply to different situations. We're not asserting that there is an existing cross connection, but there doesn't have to be an existing cross connection for it to still represent a risk to the city's water supply. That's why the language is written the way it is, where there is or could be a potential cross connection from an auxiliary water source.
But we don't find anybody who has ever done that?
No, I wouldn't say that. I just don't know of it off sitting here. But we have a, a staff person who, this is their full-time job, and I'd have to ask him in his records if he has that.
Well, I'm certainly extremely concerned about safety of our water supply. And I want to thank you and P P and L before for taking good care of our water supply. And we have ancient piping in our city, still in good shape because our water supply has been neutralized and doesn't rust out the pipes. And, um, we've stayed healthy because of that kind of care that you've taken of it. And, but I, it seems to me, um, a really odd situation where a person would, for some reason, connect their well water to the city's supply. And when, and another question that, uh, you can answer very shortly, I'm sure, is how much do these backflow devices cost?
Sure.
And do you connect them on the city side of the meter or on the customer's side?
Um, the backflow devices are a couple hundred dollars to purchase. Um, they go by regulation, they're required to be on the customer's side of the meter before the first, um, turn of the pipe, basically. So before any split of the pipe on the customer's side, you have to have the backflow device. So behind the meter, usually it's in its own box directly behind the meter. They do have to be tested annually and a report has to be provided to the city that the test confirmed the system works. I think my test this year was $35. So it's a, there is an annual cost, um, associated with that.
You say you personally have a backflow?
Oh, sure. There's probably four thousand, eight thousand, there's thousands of them in town. Every, there's Scott, every, um, residence that has a sprinkler system that's connected to city water has a backflow device. It's required, yes.
Okay.
And if you don't, you should.
If I water my lawn with a hose, I.
No, no, if you water with a hose, the, um, you don't require to have one. Most of the faucets have their own backflow prevention device. Scott can tell you how many devices we have in town that we manage.
About 9,000, and, and they're growing every day.
Counselor Novak had a question.
Would it make sense for the city to, um, just take care of installing those?
That's a very good question. There are a lot of.
Know it's done right.
A lot of.
We know it gets tested correctly.
Sure. Um, some smaller water systems will do that, where the water system, um, installs the device, pays for the annual maintenance, and then they just include that as part of your bill. Um, so for instance, Dumbek, when they were a system, they did that for their customers. For us, it would be, we could, if you want to direct us to do that, um, we would just incorporate that into the customer's bill.
So, so you put it on the individual customer's bill rather than having it be part of the universal overall city cost?
That would probably be.
Be up to us, wouldn't it?
I mean, you could tell us not to do that. It's up to you.
That's, that's about half of our, our accounts, isn't it?
We have about 19,000 total accounts, so almost half.
Counselor Novak.
Yeah, again, um, I'm familiar with backflow. I pay a charge every year for the testing and, you know, it's, I don't have a problem with that. And I, from what I understand, neither does the Luther family. Their household has the city water with the backflow testing. I guess I'm just taking issue here with, um, the fact that the well isn't connected. And I, I, I just don't, I don't think it's right for a city to force individuals who live in this town who are doing the right thing with the city connection with the backflow testing. She's got that, but she also.
Counselor Novak, to clarify, they do not have a backflow device on their city.
Not on their well, but on the, on the house?
No, they do not have a backflow device on their city water connection right now.
You don't, you don't provide any, any backflow for any residences?
We do not, we do not install backflow devices.
What about chemicals and things that could possibly get into people's, uh, systems somehow through fertilizers and contaminants of that nature?
So if a, if a residential property has a spring, an irrigation system that is piped into their water connection, they are required to have a backflow device and that is how the chemicals could go in. If they, any other, um, uh, customer, a commercial or industrial customer that has any, uh, connection to any process also is required to have backflow prevention devices. But if you don't have a sprinkler system and you're simply using a hose, like Counselor Olson, Olson says, the spigot on your house, um, comes with a anti-siphonage fixture in it. So that provides that protection.
So you don't get it from, from chemicals that are like pesticides and things like that, those can't get back into your water system?
So I'll ask Ms. Luther, do you have a sprinkler system? Yeah, you water with a hose.
I water with a hose.
Well.
How is that any different than, than Counselor Olson's situation when he waters with a hose?
Because she has a well that has underground piping.
But it's not connected.
That's right, but it could connect. See, the, the, the difference is, we have accidental cross connections that happen very easily. I can show you a picture on my phone of two pipes in the ground and you will not be able to tell me which one is the irrigation pipe and which one is the city water pipe, because they're not labeled, there's no difference. And it's not intentional. Well, sometimes it's intentional. Sometimes people do connect, intentionally make these connections. But we are not going to go out, we don't have the staffing or capability to go out and monitor every house that has a well or require of them to provide us with, um, positive tests every year or every month or every week that demonstrate that there's not a cross connection. This is the best management practice and the model code for how to have backflow prevention protection of your drinking water system. This is the code that is in place in multiple cities around the state. Our backflow program has been invited to speak at the State Water, Drinking Water Conference as a demonstration of excellence in how to manage this program. So it provides the highest level of protection and is the only way that we can be sure that these accidental or intentional cross connections from pressurized auxiliary sources cannot get back into the city system.
So forgive me for, it just, they, they showed, they, they didn't install a backflow device when the city said, please install one, but they did a professional report showing, verifying, 100% verifying, there is no connection and therefore no contamination. This is, this is a legitimate report, which.
Agreed. I'm not debating that.
Yeah, but to me, that solves the issue because you're like, well, it might be, well, it's not. This report shows that it's not connected. It cannot contaminate our city's water. And I too appreciate that, you know, in, in your perspective, you are doing everything you can to keep our water clean, okay, and safe. I respect that. We have different ideas about what that entails sometimes, but that's not the issue of tonight's conversation. I just, I'm, I'm agreeing with you that that's important. And to my mind, this testing that they did shows that we don't have a problem here. And I think that if other citizens wanted to, you know, if someone came to them and said, oh, they have a well, and you checked it out and you said, well, here's your thing, you can put in a backflow thing, or you can prove to me that we don't have a problem. The Luther household, to my mind, proved that we don't have a problem.
That is not in the code. That is not in the code. What the code says is, any customer of the city's water supply shall install a backflow prevention device in the following circumstances. And the first one is where an auxiliary water system exists on the property that is or could be connected. That is the code that applies in this situation and has been applied in hundreds of other situations. The first, the prior paragraph, and we've been through this and the city attorney has been through this, the prior paragraph is talking about where we find an actual cross connection and how the customer can remedy that violation of the code. And when you have an actual cross connection, how you remedy the violation of the code is you eliminate the cross connection, you physically separate the systems, or you install a backflow device. That is not the situation. We are not alleging that there is an actual cross connection. What we are doing is applying section 225, which we have applied hundreds of times. And it says, where there is an auxiliary water supply, the customer shall install the appropriate backflow prevention device where there is or could be a connection. So if you want to change that code, you will need to change that code and then you are opening up hundreds of properties that are currently protected from contaminating our system and creating those possibilities of cross connection.
Your honor, I'm going to withdraw my objections. And I think, Ms. Luther, uh, you really do need to install that, uh, backflow device.
I would like to say, too, that this also says that the customer shall provide sufficient information for the utility to evaluate any degree of potential suspected or actual cross connection, which I've done. And that is also a shall. And there's also, uh, I would like to say, too, that I, according to the EPA's website, it shows that there's not just two ways of remedying any kind of backflow. There's actually several kinds of devices dependent on the hazard level that's presented. And I, there was nothing investigated to determine what hazard level has been presented here. And there's no appropriate level to address that. It's just saying you're going to provide the biggest, baddest kind of backflow prevention device that is used on, um, car washes, industrial places, hospitals, um, mortuaries, things like that, for my one-line system, which is completely overkill, but that's what they want to do.
So I, I think we ought to buy the meters and automatically have that backflow device on them.
There, I, I think there are cities that do that.
I think we've heard enough discussion tonight. So, um, city attorney, do we need to do anything with this? Or she need to go to planning or?
There's, there's nothing, I mean, if the, the council doesn't want to make any changes, then they don't need to make a, a motion or anything. They, if, if they want to make a motion to, for clarity, to keep the status quo, they can do that, but they're not required to. I mean, it was business from the public originally. And if the council is not going to make any, any, um, direction to the Public Works Director to do anything different, then it is, it'll, it'll stay the same.
So are you saying that if we want to make a change to the ordinance, we need a motion?
If you want to make a change to ordinance, we would definitely have to do that.
And if we don't want to have any change, we just don't do anything?
You can just leave it alone. You can just leave it alone.
So thank you very much for attending this evening.
Thanks.
Sir? Is there any way to at least find out the degree of possibility of, I mean, to me, when I read the report, the report says there's no possibility here of contamination. I just don't think it's right to force people to do something without grounds.
It's time for a motion.
Does anybody have a motion? Nobody has a motion?
What, what would I move if I want to make sure, if, if I wanted to, to, if I wanted to say this report should suffice in this situation? Do we not sometimes do things on a case-by-case basis?
You can make a motion if you'd like.
No, it'd have to be a general motion.
Yeah, general motion.
Okay, well, I would make a motion that we, on the basis of this report, declare that this is not a danger to our community or our water supply.
That's not what, you have to make a motion to change the ordinance, which opens us up for other people coming here to the same thing.
That's the only recourse we have is to change the ordinance? I'm talking about an individual situation.
Well, the, the ordinance right now would mandate that she'd be required to get one, the way it reads. So if we wanted to make it a case-by-case basis, we would need to change the language in the ordinance. And I'm just spitballing this to something like, if there is an auxiliary water supply, the customer may be required to provide a backflow valve rather than shall. It would have to be some type of a change in the language itself because right now it's requiring it, so...
I would suggest that the code already has flexibility because it's where, the language says where it is or could be connected. And we already, um, look at each property and as I said, there have been large properties where there's a well-fed irrigation system that's hundreds of feet away from the city line, hundreds, where there's no reasonable accidental way you could make that connection and we have not required backflow in that device, in that situation. In this situation, this, the Luther property is very similar to many other properties, residential properties in town. And it is within feet of the house, which is served by water. So we would not, under our discretion, exclude them from the requirement.
And I'd like to find out what kind of evaluation was done on my house? Who came to my house and evaluated my whole system?
I looked at the pictures you provided in the report, which has a sprinkler head literally 10 feet from the foundation of your house.
And that was the extent of the evaluation on the hazard level?
No, well, we're not going to get into it.
So I, I think we have, we won, we're good, counsel? I think we've heard enough, there will be no motion tonight, unless you want to make a motion, but do the ordinance.
I don't know if this code is, you know, if it's just a matter of how you read it.
Well, the interpreters are sitting at the table.
Yeah.
She's right there.
Right, and one is saying one thing and another is saying something else. And so, um, that's where I think the actual hazard level should come into play.
It's not...
It's not the hazard level.
We're not alleging that she is, has a current actual hazard. We're alleging that there is a potential cross connection that could happen there that could lead to a backflow into our city systems.
Could, could, could and could?
Absolutely could.
But, but it doesn't exist, it's, there is no connection. They could put one in, but there isn't one.
Counselor Novak, Counselor Novak, that's not the point. If you want to make a motion to change the ordinance, please do so.
If that's, if that's the only way to, to treat someone fairly, then I know what's going to happen here because no one will join me in it, but I think this is wrong. And so if, if I need to make a motion to amend this ordinance so that it is more clear-cut and, and more fair to the people who live in this town, then I move to do that.
Is there a second?
That's about what I expected.
Hearing none, thank you all for attending tonight, most of the meetings adjourn.